Good evening, everyone. In compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a public hearing meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, June 22, 2023, at 5:40 PM. A quorum of the board is physically present at the AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It is also being broadcast on cable channel 22 through Spectrum, Astound Broadband, and on channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. To our audience tuning in remotely and here in person, welcome and thank you so much for joining us. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Boswell, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Zapata to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously. So, next we have an opportunity for the public to share comments with the board related to the public hearing on the fiscal year 2023-24 budget. This time allow speakers to comment publicly pertaining to the adoption of the proposed fiscal year 23-24 budget. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public hearing portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio record their remarks. Tonight, we have two who signed up to speak in person and no recorded remarks. In order to provide as many opportunities for input as possible within a limited time period at this meeting, each speaker will be allotted one minute. No substitutions or yielding of time to others is permitted. Callers who signed up to speak in person are welcome to come to the microphone when their name is called. As you come to the microphone, there is a device that will light up as you move through your one minute of allotted time, and when the buzzer sounds, please make one final thought in one sentence. Again, we ask that whether you come to give a complaint or praise that you reference a staff member by position or by abbreviated last name. We ask that all audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for others at all times. So, our guest speakers for tonight are Grace Hedrick and Emily Watson. So, Grace Hedrick, when you're ready, you may move to the podium.
Hi, good evening. My name is Grace Hedrick, and I am the mother of two future AISD students, including the one I've got on me right now. I'm also a volunteer with the Texas Chapter of Moms Demand Action. I'd like to speak to you about House Bill 3, a bill that passed this spring in the state legislature that requires an armed presence on all school campuses and therefore likely will require additional budget. I am here today to voice our firm opposition to arming educators via the Guardian or Marshall programs or any other path in response to HB3. I want teachers and staff to be focused on creating a positive learning experience for our children. Educators should not be burdened with the responsibility of safely managing a firearm while at school, or worst-case scenario, using it on an intruder. There is no data or evidence to demonstrate that an armed presence on campus keeps our children safe from an intruder. On the contrary, evidence shows that the risk of unintentional shootings or other inappropriate use of handling or handling of firearms is much higher when there are guns in our schools. This bill puts you in an unenviable position, but let me reiterate that arming teachers and staff poses significant risks to our schools' and student safety and sacrifices the primary focus of educators. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Emily Watson.
Hello, I'm the parent of two AISD students at Patton Elementary in southwest Austin. I'm here today to speak about House Bill 3 recently passed in the Texas Legislature that will require an armed presence on every school campus, including all elementary schools. I'm sure you are considering how best to comply and pay for this new requirement. I am here to urge you to avoid using the so-called Guardian or Marshall programs. Both of these plans enable teachers and staff to bring firearms to school with minimal training. One of the most dangerous ideas in the American education system is that arming teachers or staff is an effective solution to an act-or-shooter situation. While the desire for action is understandable, the notion of a teacher acting as a last line of defense in a school shooting is not based on any experience or research. Armed teachers are never an acceptable replacement for law enforcement who undergo extensive and ongoing firearms training. It poses significant risk to our students' safety and sacrifices the primary focus of our wonderful educators. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. This concludes public testimony. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? I have one quick question. Superintendent Segura, can you share with us when the public might be hearing about the district's plans for responding to HB3?
Thank you, President Singh. As the, our committee members have pointed out, a bill has recently passed that requires AIS to take action. I want to reassure our community that the plan that we bring forward will be in alignment with our values. We certainly understand the concerns, and we're going to bring back a plan that is thoughtful and that aligns, again, with our values as a community. So, as far as timing goes, we're developing that now. You know, our plan is to have that before the board in August, but we'll be having opportunities for input prior to that. So, I would say late July, early August is when you'll see that plan really take shape and be able to be presented publicly.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I'd love to ask a second brief follow-up. Can you just, in just, you know, a minute or so, clarify for our community the kind of training that the people who are currently armed, our Austin ISD PD officers undergo? Just the extent of it and what our values have set up there?
Yeah, Trustee Boswell, I think that's a great question. One of the things that we always talk about is, you know, having officers that are trained and understanding that serving students is different than what a traditional, you know, city officer or sheriff would go through. It's different, right? It's community support more than anything else. And so, here at Austin ISD, our training process is extensive. Before anybody can actually enter a school, we have over, almost a year worth of training. Typically, a cadet comes into our organization, we invest in them, we train them, de-escalation techniques, everything that we would want if someone has to be armed in our campus and that person is trained, and that's what our SROs currently go through now. So, we would expect that same level of commitment to any person that would be part of this plan, but it is an ongoing extended process, and it takes close to a year to get someone through it and onto our campus.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I just want to acknowledge that the district has a School Safety and Security Committee. Every public school district in Texas does, but that does give folk, it does give you a front-row seat to what some of the things the district is doing. So, if there are members of the public that are interested in that, you'll find more information on our website. It's the School Safety and Security Committee. Thank you. All right, so, we will now move to what we've been waiting for, which is discussion of the FY 2023 budget. So, next we have our presentation on that by Ed Ramos. So, Mr. Segura, would you please introduce?
Absolutely. Good evening, President Singh and trustees. I'd like to invite our Chief Financial Officer, Ed Ramos, to join us to provide the recommended budget for the 23-24 fiscal year. Just before we get started, I want to point out that, you know, when we started this process, we acknowledged that there were a lot of needs within our community and within our schools, but certainly limited resources. But early on in the process, we identified compensation. We identified the need to support and invest in our staff as one of the highest priorities. And so, I think when you see the budget, you will see that it reflects our values. It's in alignment with our initiatives, and many of the things that we've been tackling, including supporting students that receive special education services to a greater degree, are reflected in this budget. It is a challenge. It always is every year, and as we move forward, there are lessons that we've learned along the way this time that will apply next time, including starting earlier and establishing some standards, I should say, early in the process so that we have decisions and known commitments well before we start the planning cycle for the upcoming year. And so, I just wanted to kind of start that and seed the conversation, and now, Ed, I'll hand it back to you.
President Singh, Superintendent Segura, members of the board, we are here to listen and hear the 23-24 proposed budget. As Superintendent Segura mentioned, this was a long process. It was a seven-month process where we were really proud of making sure that we engaged our community, our staff, our leadership team, our Board of Trustees, and really developed the priorities as a district. And as mentioned, compensation was the number-one priority, as well as other areas that we really prioritized based on input that we received from our stakeholders. I do, before I begin, want to recognize members of my staff who were critical in helping me put these numbers together. We have Adriana Cedillo, our Executive Director of Budget, and Jessica Hart, our Director of Budget as well. Thank you, ladies. And so, as we began our budget assumptions, one of the things that we really wanted to make sure is we budgeted conservatively, so we based our budget on a flat enrollment. So, we are assuming that we are not going to grow next school year with overall number of students, and that's just us being conservative as a school district. Our attendance rate is based on a 92% attendance rate, which is basically where we have been averaging as a school district after the pandemic, during and after the pandemic. And so, before we actually kind of really face the challenges of the pandemic, we were usually at 95% or 96%. So, you see the difference that, how that has affected us as a school district. Property value growth, we're looking at a 14% property value growth, and then we are looking at a tax rate that we are recommending of 92.66 cents, which is actually four cents below what we were estimating to our voters when we had our bond election back in November of 2022. Also, as part of the budget development process, we are basing our numbers, the numbers that you will see before you tonight are based on current state funding. So, we are not taking into account conversations that are happening at the legislative level, which right now is not in our favor. But all the numbers that you will see before you tonight are based on current funding from the state. We are also making sure that we maintain our local fund balance policy of 20%. And then, we also continue to invest in our employees in this district, and so you will see that in our compensation package that we have already presented. But 87% of our budget goes back and is invested in our employees in this district. So, they are the backbones of our district, and so we wanted to make sure, especially during this challenging time with high inflation, with the cost of living continuing to increase, with teachers leaving the profession, that we really invested in our employees to make sure that we made a strong effort to retain our valuable employees. Also, the 88th legislative session has put a kink in our planning process, especially when it comes to really understanding what our funding will be for next year. As of June 22, we still do not know what that funding is going to look like for next year. We are hearing that there will be special sessions throughout the summer. We probably won't have any finality to what, if any, education funding increases would look like until September, and so that has posed a challenge in this budgeting process. But we continue to move forward as a district. We wanted to make sure that employees were able to make a decision early. They are making decisions now, and so we move forward with our priorities. Also, as part of this budget, we are recommending expenditure reduction strategies, and so we are proposing a deficit budget. That's not a phenomenon just only to Austin ISD. Many districts throughout the state will be passing deficit budgets. Was in a meeting with the Texas School Alliance, many of those districts, if not most of those districts, are passing deficit budgets because they are facing the same challenges. Teachers are leaving the profession. Employees are making decisions whether or not to stay in their districts, and so they knew that they needed to move forward with a compensation package. And then, when you look at our proposed budget summary recapture, we are estimating a recapture payment of $941 million. That continues to be a challenge. The only way that recapture payment can be reduced is an increase to the basic allotment, so we'll talk about that a little bit further in the presentation. Our operating expenditures are $884 million, and so we're looking at a $1.86 billion budget that we are proposing for next year. And that proposal will include a deficit budget of $52 million. When we presented at the info session in June, we presented a $53 million deficit. We have dwindled that down to 52 million, but it's important for the board to note that we are recommending a deficit budget. Our goal is this to be the year that we recommend a deficit budget, and then in future years, it's going to be very important for us to continue to look at balancing that budget in the future. So, there are some tough decisions that will come over the next several years, starting this next fiscal year. And then, when you look at our forecast, we like to forecast based on our, what we believe to be our worst-case scenario. And so, when you look at the numbers before you, with a $52 million deficit next year, 68 the following year after that, and 60 million the year after, this is assuming that funding for education doesn't change over the next several years. This is also assuming that we do nothing as a district with regards to reducing our expenditures or addressing our deficit. And so, that won't be the case, and so I will show you further on in the presentation the importance of strategies to reduce expenditures and how that affects our long-term financial stability of this district. And so, when you look at our unassigned fund balance, our goal has always been, as a district, to make sure that we keep at least 20% of operating expenditures in unassigned fund balance. So, next year's budget, we still are meeting that goal at 21.4%. The year after that, you're seeing 16.3% and 9.8%, again, looking at a worst-case scenario, and again, based on current year funding with no additional funding from the state. So, that's another reason why this slide is going to become very important as a district because we know that we have to continue to address our budget situation. Again, we are not alone in the state of Texas. Many school districts, you will start hearing about budget reduction strategies in other districts as well. And so, before you, you have some of our preliminary budget reduction strategies. That includes position reductions through attrition. So, as employees leave, we look at positions and really determine and analyze if we can afford to continue with specific positions in the district. The majority of those decisions are going to be based on non-campus positions. Most of the campus positions are high needs in this district, so those are not going to be weighed the same as non-campus-type positions in the district. Also, looking at vacancy savings, one of the strategies that we can implement as a district through vacancies is, as an employee leaves a position for another opportunity in their lives, one of the things that we can do is delay the hiring process. Even if we delay a month for a district our size, that can translate to $2 to $3 million in savings. And so, those are some of the strategies that we are going to look at. Also, looking again at contracts and software costs in the district, really analyzing the return on investment, the outcomes that these contracts and software can produce, and making sure that we are getting our return on investment for these products. So, that is going to be scrutinized and analyzed throughout this next school year. We also, any budget increases in any area in the district must be neutral. So, what that means is if we really prioritize spending in a certain area, then we're going to have to reduce expenditures in another area to make the budget strategy neutral so as not to increase our projected deficit budget. And then, again, we have the opportunity with the 2022 BOM program to really begin implementing savings through that program. We have a fund set aside for purchase of HVAC equipment and other equipment, so what that would help our operating budget with is that we would not have to rent high-dollar equipment in this district. Also, continuing to identify inefficient costs and areas that we can begin reducing expenditures, maximize our Title I funding, making sure that we really are able to supply our campuses with the highest need, with the funding that they need as a, in this district. And then, begin a budget oversight committee. So, that's going to be very important for our district as we begin looking at our expenditures. And so, we will have community members that will help us look at the data, look at our costs, and give us feedback on our budget reduction strategies. And so, with that, we have a timeline. Of course, our fiscal year begins July 1, which is just around the corner. August through September timeframe, we are going to, as an administration, begin looking at our expenditures at a high level, and so by the time the legislative process has ended and we come to the board with a budget amendment, we're thinking either September or October, we will already include some preliminary recommendations to reduce our deficit. So, we will bring back some budget reduction strategies as an administrative team to the board by the September-October timeframe. Also, we begin our sessions with our Budget Committee in October, and so we want to really begin the budgeting process early just because of the challenges that we know we will be facing as a district, and to really give our campuses, our principals, our staff time to really weigh some of the decisions that we are looking at implementing as a district, some of the, begin forming our budget priorities for the following fiscal year, and so we want to make sure that we begin that process much earlier. And so, when you look at implementing these budget deficit reduction strategies, you quickly see our projections change. And so, just by implementing some of these strategies that we have preliminarily proposed, our budget deficit could reach as low as $19 million next year versus a $52 million. After that, $30 million and $22 million. And so, again, this, keep it in mind, is based on current year funding, and so it's very important that we really look at these budget reduction strategies. You also see what it does to our fund balance. So, in our worst-case scenario, we were okay with our 20% local policy for one year. With these budget reduction strategies, if we do implement them, now we are looking to be strong financially for the next three years, and so that just shows the importance of some of the decisions that we must make as a district over the next several years. This slide basically shows when we adopt a budget in June versus when we end the school year at the end of July. And so, you'll see that when we adopt our budgets, we try to give a worst-case scenario. We usually end the budget much better than projected. So, when you look at the 2021, 2021 school year, we projected a $48 million deficit, and it was $32 million. In 2022, we projected a $44 million deficit, and it was a $32 million surplus. 2023, we projected a $5 million surplus. We're projecting to end this current school year with an $8 million surplus. And so, when you look at next fiscal year's deficit of $52 million, again, we are projecting to end better than what we are projecting currently. And so, some of the major investments that we have moved forward with as a district include special ed and special education and bilingual stipends. We are increasing those from $5,000 to $7,000, so that's an $8 million cost. Compensation and budget priorities, we have implemented those, about $56 million. There are certain costs that are increasing in this district that we have no control over. Some of those include the electricity rate adjustment, which means our electrical costs are increasing as a district. We are also opening a brand-new school, and so that will increase our electrical costs, our operating costs. Our Travis County appraisal and fees, we have no control over that. And then, property insurance premiums are some of the areas that we must, that basically are fixed costs in this district. We are also really prioritizing our economically disadvantaged and emergent bilingual weights in the district, $6.3 million. Our instructional coaches, we've added instructional coaches on our operating budget, 10 additional positions. That's at almost half a million dollars. Small campus, teacher minimum, we've added 17 FTEs to our small campuses. That's a cost of $1 million. And then, our educational diags and LSSPs, we've invested 50 additional FTEs, $6.2 million. Expansion of Literacy First is a recommendation that we are making as a district, that's $1.3 million. Because of the legislative session and really not knowing where we stand with regards to any increase to the basic allotment, we also are proposing to delay certain investments from our early recommendations, and again, these are based on the feedback that we've received over the past month with regards to how can we reduce our deficit. And so, when we look at some of those areas and opportunities, we see general marshal, middle school, we can reduce six FTEs from our original allotment of 30, so that's $250,000 savings. Athletic trainers, hold off on hiring six, that's at a cost of half a million. The ombudsman's office, hold off on one of the two FTEs there, $120,000, and then paper report cards, $320,000. So, with delayed investments in those areas, and what we're saying is we're not necessarily taking those off of the budget, we're just delaying the process until we find out what our ultimate funding is from the state of Texas. And so, with those delays, we are looking at a $52 million deficit as a district. We are proud of our compensation package that the board did approve. That came at a $64 million investment. That included an increase of $4 to our hourly employees, and so now our minimum pay is $20 per hour. One of the things that that really impacted was over 2,100 employees in this district who are below that $20-an-hour range. So, that's a huge benefit to many of our employees, our hourly employees. We also looked at special ed and bilingual stipends, $7,000. That came at a cost of $5, $8 million. Our administrative and professionals, 5% for pay grades AP 1 through 12, 3% AP 13 through 16. Teacher pay raises, we have one of the higher percentages in the central Texas area, 7%. That was at $23 million. And then, our base salary for LSSPs and educational diags, 20% increase. Recapture continues to be a challenge for our district. We are estimating a recapture payment for the 2023-24 fiscal year of $940.5 million. The year after that, in '24-'25, we expect to reach over $1 billion in recapture payments. So, recapture, as you know, is funds that we send back to the state of Texas. As a school district, we, that recapture amount, the $940.5 million, is enough to fund another Austin ISD. So, that is the amount that we send back to the state of Texas. It's 55% of our local tax collection, so over half of our tax collections go back to the state. The only way, opportunity for that recapture payment to be reduced would be an increase to the basic allotment, and so we await to see what the final outcome is this legislative session. We also monitor our administrative cost ratio. TA does have a recommendation on the ratio that they would like districts our size to maintain. That's a standard of .0855, and so we are projecting to be under that standard, and so that was a goal that we set out as a district this year to make sure that next year's budget, we were below that threshold. So, we will continue to monitor that and ensure that we do maintain and continue to be below that TA ratio. And then, this just simplifies our budget in a $1 bill showing that over half of our dollar goes back to the state in the form of recapture, $940.5 million, and then we have $922 million left to operate as a district. From those $922 million, we continue to invest 87% in our teachers and our staff in this district. So, we are proud of that percentage. It's one of the higher percentages in central Texas, so we continue to be committed to our employees. And then, this slide basically cuts down our budget by functional area, and so our biggest functional expenditures occur in instruction. Then, we also have facilities and operations, instructional and school leadership, student services. So, this is just a way of looking at our total budget. When you look at our schoolhouse, the majority of our budget goes back to the state in recapture. And then, this splits our budget by program and And then this splits our budget by program and tent code. And so basically, what that means is you look at different areas of programs. Those include comp ed, career and tech, early childhood, athletics, dyslexia, bilingual education, college career and military readiness, and gifted and talented. So this graphic breaks out how we, as a district, spend in those different programs, programmatic areas. And then our tax rate, we are proposing, or we will propose in September, a tax rate that is seven cents less than our current-year tax rate. As stated earlier, we are also projecting four cents below what we had promised our voters, and so we are keeping that promise. So we are looking at 92.66 cents. One of the current discussions that is occurring at the legislative level is with tax compression. And so there are two different plans that are being proposed legislatively. You've probably heard about them in the media. The lieutenant governor's plan is that really concentrates on homestead exemptions, $100,000 homestead exemption. So that plan really benefits homeowners. Then the plan on the House side is concentrating on appraisal caps, 5% appraisal caps. And so that version really looks at also assisting businesses in the state of Texas. And then the legislative process. And so we are continuing to monitor the legislative process. Unfortunately, it has not been the outcome that we were hoping for. We were hoping for an early decision from the Texas Legislature with regards to funding so that we could really determine the maximum amount that we can invest in our district and our employees. And so, again, looking at the conversations that are occurring at the legislative level, we probably won't know a final outcome until September. So they have set aside $3.9 billion in school funding, but as of now, we have not seen any increase to the basic allotment. So there is no additional funding for school districts at this point. When we talk about property tax relief and that costing about $12 billion, that is no additional funding to school districts in the state, including Austin. And so when they talk about investing in property tax relief and lowering school district tax rates, those are not additional dollars that come to any school district in the state. Also, the conversation that's occurring currently is with vouchers. And so vouchers would really hurt districts throughout the state, including Austin. And so that is a conversation that continues at the legislative level. We estimate that for every student we lose as a result of vouchers, we would be losing about 6,000, over $6,000 per student in this district. And then safety and security, they have passed an allotment of $10 per ADA. That's a 28-cent increase over the prior allotment. They've also added $15,000 per campus. And so what we are projecting is actually a net shortfall from that safety and security allotment of about a little over, close to 2.5, $3 million from those requirements. So a further challenge that we'll have to address as we continue this budgeting process for the next fiscal year. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you for that excellent presentation. Trustees, any questions?
Hi, y'all. This is trustee Lugo. I have my question.
Yes, trustee Lugo, thanks for zooming in.
Absolutely. So just in case y'all hear background music, I am in fact at Fort, in Fort Worth, at one of our trustee leadership conferences. So first, I want to say thank you for allowing me to join by Zoom. Second, thank you, Chief Ramos, for providing a thorough update regarding the budget constraints that we're facing as a result of decisions made at the legislative level. I did want to ask a couple of questions, just to make sure that, you know, we're being transparent about the incredibly difficult decisions we're making. I appreciate that we're talking about which investments we will move forward with and the fact that although what's being proposed tonight is that we delay or maybe slow down other investments, including investments in athletics. I'm wondering if you could revisit, I believe, I don't remember what slide it was on, but you talked a little bit about the full-time employee positions, the FTEs, and which ones would be filled sooner rather than later. Can you provide a little bit more context around, for example, what are some of the realities and constraints that we're facing if we were to fill athletic positions, since those coach positions generally begin their contracts July, I think it's sometime in July, mid-July, July 19th? What are some of the realities that we would face if that were the course of action that we would take?
So we do know if we delay the hiring process, specifically trustee Lugo, I think you're referring to athletic trainers. And so if we delay the hiring process with athletic-
Yes, that's right.
Okay. So if we delay hiring athletic trainers until September, we would have a more difficult time in filling those vacancies. And so we would have to look at, as a district, if that is still one of the delays or that we would recommend, again, pending board feedback. One of the options that the board always has is amended budgets, and so those can happen at any board meeting. And so after you have conversations and we hear feedback, we could always amend a budget in August, in September, in October. And so those are options that the board continually has to move forward with.
Yeah, and trustee Lugo, this is Matias. One of the things I wanted to make sure was known to our community is that, you know, we absolutely believe this is a need. It was identified in the long-range planning process. It's something that has made its way in our budget this entire time. One of the things that we attempted to do in the information session two weeks ago was to identify which things, you know, could potentially be slowed down, only because they hadn't actually occurred yet, right? That was really the focus of any adjustment we could make at that point, because as y'all know, our communities are, our school communities are already staffing up all the way across. And so as the team and I sat down and identified any opportunity, we could only identify those ones that hadn't been hired. And unfortunately, just because of timing processes and where we are, you know, the fact that we hadn't hired all of the additional athletic trainers made that kind of the, one of the only things we could logically slow down that wouldn't have an impact on staff that had already been hired. But it's a commitment from our, the administration, and certainly from, you know, all of our conversations around it, you know, we want to get to a place where we can bring them in, because we do view it as a secured, as our, sorry, as a safety concern for us. And so it'd be our goal to get that back to the board as quickly as possible in one of the amended budgets in the near future. That'd be our goal.
Okay. Thank you both, and having some technical difficulties on this side, so hopefully you guys can hear me. So can you help me understand, I think it may also be the phrasing, right, that it wouldn't have an impact, but we know that there is an impact if we delay the hiring of athletic trainers. But can you put into context what you mean by, like when you're, when the administration is looking at, you know, right, again, those fiscal constraints? We know any decision to not move forward, there is an impact, but can you provide some context around in relation to other decisions? And I think you said it, but if you could just kind of help me, help drive the message home for me?
So I'm going to attempt to do it, and I would ask perhaps Ed to weigh in. You know, one of our goals as an administration, as an organization, is to ensure that all of our campuses are properly staffed. I know our human capital division has been working tirelessly for months to make sure that we are staffed and we are currently much better positioned than we have been in recent years. The challenge we have is when we think about the upcoming school year, we have to add FTE allocations, and those cannot be added until a budget is identified. And that budget can only be identified once the board approves it. And so recognizing that we were already in a deficit budget, we needed to make it an adjustment back based on feedback we'd received in the information session. And the only reason that these were identified as the opportunity is because, again, they had not started. Now, we'll say, for us as an organization, you know, any 5A school, high school that identifies, or one of the six remaining, we would want to understand how it's going to impact, you know, scheduling, how it's going to impact perhaps the ability to provide coverage at some of the athletic events. We'd work with the athletic department to provide coverage. It may not be a one-to-one early on in the semester. Perhaps it's a little bit later, where we can finally get to an amended budget and bring them back in. But we certainly want to provide coverage. But right now, because of the way the budget's represented, we can't, you know, kind of commit to that allocation. But it's our goal to find the funds in the very near future, to be able to come back with an amended budget so that we can do it. That being said, you know, we're always looking to hire, and I know that process can be challenged, challenging for our, for our school communities whenever something like this occurs. I don't know, Ed.
Absolutely. No, that's perfect. And then one last, maybe request for consideration. You know, this is one of those moments where I reflect back on what I used to say before I sat on the board. Now I'm on the board, and it's a lot more complicated and difficult and gut-wrenching decisions that feel like we really have a, although a long game is there, right? No pun intended. But I think the short-term, the way folks may feel about the short-term decisions certainly isn't something that I think any of us, any of us wish to inflict on, on the coaches, our students, our community. So in that vein, if there's anything that I or the board as a body can do to support the communication as it's related to staff and students and the community at large, my hope would be that the administration would call on us so that we can also echo that we are fully committed to making sure that we do what we say and we say what we do. And this is one of those times where it, for me personally, it just feels like I'm having to put off paying one bill because the repo guy is right at my door, right? So not pleasant at all.
Thank you, trustee Lugo. Appreciate your comments. Was there anything else that you had?
No, thank you.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Any other trustees have questions? Trustee Hunter?
Not, two questions, but also something for the administration to consider. When we say athletic trainers, people have a lot of things in their mind, and we know that it's a safety concern, and we know what they do, and we know what happens when they're not there. They're our first responder, right? So I think that's really important for people to understand that we're not talking about, like, training, right? We're talking about if a child goes down, if someone is hurt, if on the football field, the kid bangs their head, they got a concussion, that's what, and if there's no one there for that, I mean, it's one of the situations where you really can't go, is there a doctor in the house? And so I appreciate the administration for thinking about that, because as you were speaking, I was like, oh, those are, you're just answering all of my questions. And I just think it's important for our community to understand what that means, because we, in this room, know, I'm not sure how many people out there know, right, what an athletic trainer does and why it's so, ah, you know, we need this because it's safe, but how do we pay for it? And we haven't hired him yet, so one month, but one month can mean a big deal. So that's the tension for us, sitting here for, for our community, just so that they can understand kind of like our thought process and why they're wrestling. Because I know some ones at home is like, just don't hire them, the kids can work out later, right? But that's not what they do. They do so much more than that. And then I have a question, and you can help me. If in a special session, some unfunded mandate should arise, how well-positioned are we? Or does this, is this the, like Noalita said, right? You know, I've just got enough to pay the light bill, but the repo man is here, now my kid just got hit, and I gotta go to the doctor. I mean, how well are we positioned if we get an unfunded mandate of any sort from our state at this point?
Any unfunded mandate that we were, received from the state at this point, we would have to quickly make decisions to reduce budgets in other areas. So we could not, in essence, my recommendation would not be to add on to our 52 million deficit. We would have to find, reduce sources of expenditures in one area to fund these unfunded mandates.
Thank you.
Trustees, any other questions or comments? Yes, trustee Sabata.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos, and your amazing staff for this hard work. Math is not my cup of tea, but it's, it's a very hard task and with so many numbers and lots of money. But I, I just, you know, I was just very disappointed when I learned that we had to send back money, that we didn't spend all Title I money the last year, when so many of our schools need every single penny. And so now, I hope, you did say that we hope that we are going to spend all those dollars. I am, I would still like to have a presentation to our community of what Title I is, because that is something that has changed for me from when I started years ago. And I'd really like us to make sure that there is a way that we are watching those dollars and that we do not send one penny back, you know? We cannot afford it, especially this year, you know? So I don't want our schools to suffer, and I just want to make sure that we are, that they have access to those funds. And I don't know, you know, it just, it would be helpful for me in the community to understand how Title I works and how it's dispersed, and, you know, just so that we can make sure that we're accountable to, to spending those funds. Because we need them. The other thing is, so I know that we want it to compensate everyone, and there's, there was a lot of, some calls about, you know, we are overpaying so many people here at Central Office. And then there was a proposal for a cap. Could you explain to the community how we changed that? That there's a cap and how, and who is getting the pay increases?
So trustee Sabata and Chief Financial Officer, Ed Ramos, I believe trustee Sabata's referring to the 5% AP scale versus the 3% at, I think, AP 12 and above?
13.
13 and above. And I believe that's what it is. So I'm going to attempt to respond to that. And Arne, if you'd like to approach the table to clarify for me. So one of the things that we recognized was that, you know, we needed to invest in all of our staff, especially the staff that are supporting our campuses. And we have administrative professional scale, and that scale goes from, you know, campus-level staff all the way through central administration staff up to our senior executives within Austin ISD. And so what we did when we were going through the process was we recognized that everybody, because we needed to support the entire system, needed some level of adjustment, but that we wanted to focus those percent increases lower in the system so that executive directors and below would receive the 5%, and those above would only receive the 3%. And again, that's in an effort to be competitive, ensure that our entire system is supported. But that differentiation, I think, does just that. Trustee Sabata makes that differentiation between AP 13 and below, is that correct? And then 3% for AP 13 and above versus 5%.
Okay. So you're saying that every single person in AISD is getting a raise?
That's correct.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I think I got it correct.
And just that last year, AP did not get a paid percent increase.
Correct. Thank you.
Right, right. Okay. So I, and I think that was the concern that, I mean, that we thought, we had heard that there was going to be a cap of people who made only so much, and above that, there was no going to, you know, there was a certain level of administration, and that we would be able to say, reduce our deficit by doing that. So that's not the case here.
Not, not with this current- Not, not with this current proposal. Again, one of the things that we are looking at is delaying some of our hiring as vacancies occur.
Right, right. Okay. And, and then we had also talked about, about some of our priorities that we, we understood were, you know, we couldn't really move forward because of, of the deficit. But, and I'm glad, you know, literacy first was one and then also the ombudsman. But we were going to have conversations, so we added it already. So did we, is that something that we already, I don't remember we voted on that, so.
So, so we haven't voted on the final budget, that's tonight. But in this proposal, literacy first is included as one of our investments. The ombudsman, we had two positions originally and we're delaying one of those positions. So one is included in the budget, one is, will be delayed until September when we find out the outcome of the legislative funding.
Okay, but it is going to, so you are hiring one person to begin the process? Okay, all right. No, I, I, I think we need literacy first, but I know that the ombudsman was critical, especially to help, help us to be held accountable as a district in every, everything that we do. And as an opportunity for a community to have someone they can call and, you know, to help us really bring to our attention things that we need to pay attention to.
Right.
So, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Other trustees? Trustee Kaufman?
I just want to go back to the trainers for a minute and just understand, like, if there are, if the initial goal based on the LRP was to have 12 new trainers? And now we're looking at hiring six and delaying six? Am I reading this correctly?
So it was to provide, I mean, I want to make sure I get this correct. A minimum of two for comprehensive high schools, knowing that six As have two, but then five As have one. And it's because of the allocation and it's based on student capacity. But we know, sorry, enrollment, but we know that you don't have left sports just because you have, you know, less students in a comprehensive high school. So what we did was added that second to all of those schools. But for instance, you know, those schools that don't have those programs wouldn't necessarily get it.
Right.
So I don't remember the exact number, but that was the logic in building that total number up.
When I'm looking at the numbers here, I see on the proposed investments, I see 6.0 FTEs. And on the kind of delayed, I see six FTEs. So am I reading that correctly? That we're moving to a, to fund some of them, but not all of them at this start of the year?
Well, so I want to, I know that some of them have already been hired.
Two.
Two had already been hired. And so I, my understanding is that it was eight, but I want to, it was eight, two had been hired. And so based on feedback from the formation session, we're trying to slow down things that had not been completed yet, we decided to slow down the six. That was the logic behind that.
Okay. And so when we think about where they'll be distributed then, are we, if we do not fund the whole package, how will those decisions be made about which five A schools get their second and which ones would have to wait? Would it just go to whichever ones hire first and then everyone else has to wait? Or would there be a more strategic decision? Or making sure it's equitable, excuse me, making sure it's equitable and that it's contributing to the safety?
So unfortunately trustee Kaufman, I think the challenge we have is that trainers are hired by the principals and administrators on the campus. And so those who started that process earlier just have completed earlier. But you're right in that, you know, we're not allocating the FTEs. We released eight and then we're only able to slow down the six that hadn't started. So I'm not sure where those campuses are, but I can get you that information. The two that had actually gone through the process and completed it.
And do we have, from the long-range planning process, is there data on estimated injuries that may have been exacerbated because we didn't have the trainers? Or on any type of, you know, so that we don't come back six months from now and have a, you know, a fatal concussion injury that we could have prevented if we had done this? Like, do we know about like the facts around the current impact of not having them?
So at that time, we didn't have our own data. We were using information that, best practices, information from around the country around, you know, what that type of coverage does do as far as improved safety. I, we can provide that information that was collected back then. I want to restate that it is a commitment for us as an organization to find the funds. Like, this is going to continue to be a safety concern for me and for the administration. So you say six months, I don't want anybody to leave the dais or leave the evening, the meeting tonight thinking that it will be six months. When I look at the ones that have been delayed, the 13 FTEs, the, the trainers are the priority out of those for certain. But I can get you the information, I just don't have the long-range planning data.
Okay, I appreciate it. And I just want to like highlight publicly that these are the types of decisions that districts are compelled to make when they're facing budget shortfalls like this. And I don't think it's really clear sometimes when people talk about like putting, focusing first on instruction or on, you know, trying to reduce costs because we have loaded budgets. Like, that's not accurate. Like, the, the, running a school system that does more than just put kids in a desk in front of computers to do busy work, right? Running an actual school district that involves high levels of instruction plus a rounded education for kids to be involved in all the different types of activities that give them satisfaction in coming to school, that make them well-rounded people, that tie into their passions, like, it costs money. And this is, it's just frustrating to see the neglect of our public school system that results in discussions about whether we can invest in the safety of our children.
Thank you, trustee Kaufman. Anyone else? Trustee Boswell?
Thank you, trustee Kaufman, for that. I think it's, it's really important in all of this. And I appreciate, Mr. Ramos, you sharing the perspective that so far we have gotten zero in the basic allotment from the state when the state has an immense amount available if, if they had chosen to do that. And that they can still choose to do that in a special session. That is still a possibility and, and we remain hopeful and we remain realistic that we are having to make incredibly difficult decisions in a very wealthy state that is choosing to underfund our schools. And this is the impact. And, you know, would like to remind people, we fund in the bottom 10 states in per-student funding in the country. And we fund about $4,000 less than the national average. Inflation has been 19%. We would need more than $1,000 per student to catch up with the value of our dollars from 2019, the last time this was increased. The last proposal that came from the legislature was 50 per student. So we are facing incredibly painful choices that have a real impact on our students. So I also would love, and also want to say, Ms. Montgomery came in after you were naming your staff. So Katrina Montgomery was also part of the budget process. Want to make sure that you get called out for your good work. And thank you all for your fantastic work. Really appreciate that you have brought us a budget that does, I think, a very good strategic focused job. Really want to commend you on involving the community in this budget. I think that work is reflected in what has been brought to us. And really leaning into data. And, and want to give everyone a chance to talk a little bit. We talk about strategic investments, hoping to get outcomes that will improve outcomes for our students, academic and otherwise. And we talk about the cost benefit of these investments. We're going into a deficit to make sure everyone gets a meaningful raise that will allow them to continue working in our schools when there are many other options they have. And, and the vacancies last year in our teaching staff versus the vacancies this year at this time, my understanding is that we had about 1,000 last time this year. And we have 80 now. And that is due to these investments. It is due to a real investment in culture and climate. It is due to incredibly creative recruiting. I am thrilled to see that paying off already and that will have a direct impact on our students. So everyone who has been involved in that, thank you for that. Thank you as well for really leaning into the administrative cost ratio and making sure that is one of many measures to make sure the dollars go into our schools as mu, as much as they can, as close to our students as they can be. So thank you for that. I also would like to remind people that recapture, we don't receive less under the state formulas. We just pay a whole lot more. We are taxed at twice the rate to get the same amount of money for our schools as a district that doesn't pay recapture. We don't have less. Every school in Texas doesn't have enough. And, and recapture is a major issue here in our community for many, many reasons. But no one has enough and, and we're facing the same thing. A couple of questions. One about the paper report cards. We know that a lot of our families don't have access in a meaningful way to looking online. My kids, I found it incredibly difficult to go online and find some of this information. Is there a plan to make sure teachers are using perhaps some of the planning time? Something, making sure that families are connected with when students are not doing well so that families do have meaningful access to that in lieu of the paper report cards?
So trustee Boswell, I know we've had multiple conversations about how to mitigate this cost and provide that resource and that document when it's needed. At the scale that it's introduced, you know, in the budget, it's a different cost. But we certainly recognize that there are families, there are communities that don't have the ability. I mean, I don't even access them. And it's very, it can be difficult and cumbersome. So I don't have the plan in details. I do know that Oscar, Chief Technology Officer, has been working with Lakeisha Drinks and the rest of the school leadership team to find out, to develop a plan for it. I know what's, I have seen it, but I don't have it in front of me. But I can provide that to the board via board update at some point in the future.
I'm happy to know the conversation is happening, so thank you for that. I appreciate that. And I'm sure families will have some guidance, you know, some thoughts as well. I also want to flag the literacy first investment. It's unusual to see a specific partner named in a budget in this way. And, and I understand there's some real capacity building for our district, really leaning into the need to make sure every student is reading, which is the linchpin of so much that happens in our district and a proven track record of that, but also some capacity building for our own staff. Can you help me understand that a little better?
So the investment and the expansion in literacy first actually involves a new program with teaching assistance versus the, the current model that's in place. The goal is that, is for the program to eventually become self-sustaining where we as a district can not only invest in creating and moving forward with this new plan, but also expanding it in the future. But it'll impact more students. And the goal again is not only to impact our students, but to come up with a plan that'll make this a sustaining, a program, long-term in the district. And so this was a, a program actually proposed by the literacy first organization. It was exciting when we heard about it. And so we really, knowing that reading is an area of focus in this district, we wanted to make sure that we invested in that program.
Thank you very much. Also want to ask specifically about special education and the investments and kind of how that fits in with the work we're doing in that area.
Well, in multiple ways, you know, I, I often think about a budget as kind of the receipt for, you know, confirming that everything we do aligns with our values. It's the, one of the things that the board, one of the few things the board actually is required by law to do. And so within this budget, you'll see multiple connections back to the workaround, providing special education services for our students. You can see it in additional diagnosticians and LSSPs, just the sheer number of, of, of those positions. So in the past, we, for several, a couple of years now, our numbers to support the valuations has dwindled down to where it's just over two dozen. In order to, to actually address the backlog and to respond, you know, in a, in a real fashion to the challenge, we had to staff up. But we also know we have to compete. So we had to add FTEs and at the same time also make sure that it was a competitive rate to attract those who have either left Austin ISD or maybe are outside the region that we need to pull in. So both of those things are reflected here as well. The other thing that you'll see is additional staff allocations. And that's really an acknowledgement that, you know, as we provide the support in, in these areas, we're going to need to provide the support in the classrooms. So additional special education educators, that's another line item. And then on top of that, we have the stipends. And so again, it's, it's really doubling down and acknowledging that, you know, we have an area of focus. It's an initiative, it needs to represent itself in everything that we do, but most importantly in our budget, and I think that it does that. So those are the ways that it's represented in the budget.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I appreciate understanding that, a commitment to understanding that money does matter and that money alone won't fix it. And that, that both are really being undertaken in a thoughtful, strategic way. So thank you for that. Also would love to ask that, I understand the really ugly choice of focusing on academics versus trainers and, and having that be a later item for now. I am angry that we are put in that position. And I know there are many, many, many other things that we know we could invest in to make a meaningful difference for our students academically and in that well-rounded education and in, you know, post-secondary and what happens when they graduate in all kinds of ways. And I would love to put that back on our agenda in August if we could, just for an update on where we stand and whether we think that's an investment we could make as sports are beginning in the fall. I know it could be a title line issue that if you only have one trainer, which sport are you going to? Football or volleyball, you know, kind of where are you going? And that women's sports are often just as dangerous for our athletes as men's sports. And, and I would love just an update on where we stand if that is out of the budget that we finally approve tonight. Thank you.
Yes.
So trustee Boswell, you said something earlier and I don't think that we properly acknowledged all the kind of support around vacancies. We actually have, Mr. Gutierrez is here today. And so we always see Brandy. But I do want to acknowledge a lot of the innovative ideas, a lot of the, the work that has gotten us to this point is actually his work. So I wanted to say thank you publicly. We are much better positioned now than we have been for multiple years. And a lot of that's because of your work. And it seems like he's been here for a long time, but it's only been months. So thank you very much, I just wanted to point that out.
Trustee Sabata?
Talk about angry, I'm still pondering on this compensation. The 3%, the people who are getting the 3%, what is that equal to in dollars? Mr. Ramos? I mean, I don't, I just want to make sure.
So I believe that was about 250,000 for the 3% in the pay scale, 13 through 16.
Okay. So how much does it cost to get these trainers?
So the trainers, six, we're looking at about half a million dollars.
So that would help get some more trainers at least, right? Well, not, there's not, this is not to disrespect anyone, but I just think our schools need our trainers. And I would, I would be more supportive of this budget if we're able to move those dollars to help support, recruit those trainers that we need in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Sabata. Anyone else? Yes, trustee Gonzalez?
Thank you, President Singh. I just wanted to express some, some thoughts. I am very happy personally to see the inclusion of literacy first. And so I look forward to how that is going to fit into a larger literacy plan as a district. And I also was very glad to hear about the intention to make it sustainable. I hope it becomes another pipeline into teaching. I've talked with at least one person who's a literacy first tutor that is thinking about that very seriously. And so I'd like for that to be something that's formal. So thank you for that. I also want to raise up the concern that trustee Sabata raised about the Title I money. I also would like to see all of that, you know, I'm sure you would too, spent. would too, spent. And I, I do want to just ensure that the, the campuses that, that have spent all of their Title I money, that have really, you know, intentional, purposeful designed those funds into what the programs are that their campus delivers, that they aren't penalized in, in how the district re-envisioned, making sure that, that all of those dollars are spent. I know at least, yeah, a particular campus community has raised, raised that concern. And so I just wanted to, to bring that up since we were speaking about it here. I also appreciated the, the context for explaining which items were delayed and, and how you came, the administration came to the conclusion around the athletic trainers. I also want to just, you know, repeat what Trustee Hunter and Trustee Kaufman said. I was on a high school campus and I, we had a very transformative athletic trainer that didn't, you know, that's an individual that touches every single sport in our athletic department, and our athletic trainer also had student trainers, and they had transformative relationships with students that really affected academics, because those students have to pass, they have to meet UIL eligibility in order to be present at those games to participate. And so it, it is connected to academics, I see it connected very, very clearly. And so I also want to agree with the, the point that Trustee Zapata just, just raised, that we're, we're looking after student outcomes. And so I see this as a decision that really clearly affects student outcomes. Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions from trustees? Yes, Trustee Willie Chu.
So, I just want to, I want to talk about how excited I am to be able, to be a part of, of doing something that I promised I was going to do, and that was increase our wages for the people on campuses who touch our students the most closely, for that, you know, $4 an hour wage, that brings our minimum wage to $20 an hour, and to employees who have stuck with us for so long and said, I'm so grateful that I can quit the other two jobs that I work. And these are the hardest working people in their full-time job already, and they love our kids and they love our district, and for them to get to fully commit to doing that is so important. And our teachers who have stuck with our kids and are getting this raise that they, they so deeply deserve, and for the folks who are being attracted into our district, the teachers who left, who are texting me that they've applied again, and people I've worked with in other districts who never considered working in Austin ISD, like, both for our reputation as an inclusive district, as a great place to work, and of course, compensation, this is, this is a job, this is our work, and it really matters. And I wanted to ask a question, we might not have the answer yet, because I'm also so excited, like, it's, it's showing that it matters, and, because we've gone from that 1,000 vacancy, person vacancy, teacher vacancy, that was terrifying to parents and to school staff at, at the beginning of the year, and put us in, in horrible, in a horrible position all year long. And our, you know, our kids and campuses struggled because of it. And to be to 80, which is incredible. But I, I would love to know, you know, because I, I saw a lot of those vacancies were special education teacher vacancies, which is, you know, that's kids not getting what they need, and we're giving this, this substantial stipend to those teachers, and then a lot of multilingual classrooms where they're being combined into huge classrooms. Do we know yet where it, there's like a cluster with those 80 vacancies that we're seeing, or have we not, like, been able to analyze that data, because it's still in flux? Yeah, I thought you might know.
Come on up, Mr. Gutierrez.
So thank you. Right now, a lot of them are specialized in bilingual, that's where we're seeing the most we have right now. But we're working with the Met Department, I mean, with them tomorrow, as well as the, my team, to see what we can look at, what we're also looking right now, to see if people are certified, either bilingual or special education, and are not teaching that, so that we can then offer them an incentive within their own school to be able to move into those positions, so that we can fill other positions. And we have our Classified Career Fair this Saturday, so we'll focus on making sure we're finding special education teacher assistants, as well as the regular teacher assistants as well, because those are the individuals that support the campuses and their work, their teachers. So we're going to make a, just a consolidated effort to not only make sure we're staffing our teacher vacancies, but we're also staffing our teacher assistant vacancies, because they all have to be staffed. And that's my goal, is to come back and say we have zero teaching vacancies and everything's covered on the first day of school. That's my goal.
Well, thank you so much, and I appreciate you being so smart and flexible and pivoting and doing everything you can.
You have to do that in this market, so.
That's right, that's right. Thank you.
And we started early, we started in April, and sometimes that was looked at, but we started very, very early, securing quality talent and making sure we're offering pre-hires and lining talent and making projections on looking at data from the past five to seven years as well.
Thank you so much. It's the most important thing we do, yeah.
It's for our kids, it's super important.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I loved that little exchange. That was great, and I appreciate the hard work as well. Did you have another question or comment? Okay. You made me think of something, Trustee Willie Chu, which is, you know, the research that talks about how a highly qualified teacher is the most important school-based factor in student achievement. And I do feel like that this budget that the administration is bringing to us reflects our commitment to our students' academic outcomes. I feel really good and excited about future board monitoring reports, because when I ask, but what, did we have vacancy? Like, you know, were there actually teachers in those classrooms? You know, we're going to get an answer, yes, there were, and that's why, you know, we, when we talk about fidelity of implementation, the most basic piece of that is, was there a qualified teacher in that classroom? You know, you can talk about all the training you want, or all the PLCs or whatever, but if there's not a teacher there, you have, you don't really have what you need. And so thank you to the staff for just working so hard to work on that piece, and to my colleagues for just being so persistent and so good about clarifying, you know, what our values are as individuals. And I think, I feel good about this, and I, and I, at the same time, I see the cuts we're going to have to make, and I hope that we put the same thoughtfulness into seeing where we need to trim, and really remembering history and, you know, in our district, and, and how different decisions impact our district in the short and long term, and just continue to get better. And I have total faith that we're going to really, that we're going to be able to do that. So with that, are there any other questions or comments on the budget? Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Ramos. All right, so at this time, we will adjourn our public hearing, take a short break, and then return to open the regular voting meeting. So Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, and having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Zapata to adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously, this meeting, this meeting is adjourned at 6:58 PM. Thank you.